Hello. My name is Officer Cash, also known as Sensei Cash, to our martial arts group. This is Danny.
Hi Danny.
Alright Danny is, uh, let's see if I got this right here. I can read health records too.
Just a little bio on Danny, that's all.
Danny Scapra?
Scapra.
Uh, okay. Took it upon himself to help set the chairs up for the parents, outgoing and friendly. Demonstration first?
Yes, we're gonna be, we're gonna do it in demonstration first, but he was chosen because he's our outgoing guy and he took it upon himself to help out and start setting chairs up and that's part of our leadership program. So he stood out right away.
The time is 6:33. We're gonna call to order the April 9th meeting of the village board. Alright. Danny is also going to lead us in the block.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good.
Okay Danny, turn the drinks.
Thank you Danny. This time we'll have Pastor Hunt to the education.
Good evening everyone. I'm Pastor James Hunt from New Hope Christian Committee Church. And I'm going to ask that you would all bow and pray with me. Most gracious and almighty God, today is the day that you have made and we will rejoice and be glad in it. We welcome your presence in this place on this evening. Oh Lord, we ask that you look with favor on every citizen of the village of Moni. We pray for peace and prosperity in the face of prejudice and poverty. Encourage every heart, inspire every mind, and strengthen every hand for the work that must be done together. Now God, as the mayor and the members of this council attend to the business of your people, keep them mindful of the great responsibility that you have given them as stewards of this great village. Grant them a servant's heart that they may serve with wisdom and compassion. Finally dear God, may all we say and do here today be done for your great glory and honor. We humbly ask all these things in your name and by your grace, amen.
Pastor Hunt, if you could, real quick, I'd like to recognize the milestone that your troops have had.
Yes sir.
Those seven years.
Yes sir.
Have been four, I believe, four that you've been here?
Yes, four that we've been here and seven altogether.
Thank you.
And Mayor, we want to thank you for attending our anniversary celebration. You've been a great member to the church.
Thank you for being here. Okay, roll call please.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Holston?
Here.
Horn?
Here.
Hop?
Here.
And Razik?
Here.
At this time, we are going to ask... We're gonna ask Officer Cash to come forth and he's going to give a demonstration with his... Martial? Ninjas? I've done plenty of sparring today, I've been looking at taking all these experts.
I take it on the...
Yeah, you're on. Uh, can you, uh...
Okay, class? Light up please. Oh, I don't need this. My parents will tell you. Scoot over here, scoot down. I would like to present to you tonight a project that the Mayor's Office of Parks and Recreation, in conjunction with people like myself and Professor Sivkar, have worked on a mentoring program, not just a karate program, but an actual mentoring program that teaches the kids to become future leaders of Moni, not just to be able to fight, defend themselves, anti-bullying, but actual leadership programs that bring together the actual practice of the martial arts, tethered with a philosophy that comes from what we call the Hawaiian Temple. Anyone that's familiar with the Hawaiian Nation, there's always that idea of aloha, which to us is love, love people, et cetera. When we teach our kids how to defend themselves, we temper that with aloha. All the kids are asked to not only do the training that you're gonna see tonight, but they're asked to go out and do acts of kindness. So some of the acts of kindness that they've done, and I have a list of them here, but I, every week we would ask them to tell us what the act of kindness was. And what they all shared in common was a very passion for their neighbors. It was during the time when there was a lot of snow, so they were going out helping their elderly neighbors shovel, bring groceries in and this sort of stuff. This is what stood out to me the most, and every, every young person here, not only did it, but they did it with love and enthusiasm. So what you're gonna see tonight is just one little part of what we teach in this program, but the idea is to give them a future leadership position in our community. Okay. Class? Bow! Face this way. Again, bow! Face the audience. Turn around. Face, bow! To your left everyone, face, bow! And once again, turn to your right, face the audience. Lily, take the front, everyone kind of move back a little bit. If we're gonna do this for the audience outside, Lily take the front, everyone move back just a little bit. Final bow, class, bow! Class? Ready!
All right!
Horse stance! Right side, front punch, punch!
Kya!
Arm punch!
Kya!
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 Horse stance! Right side, uppercut, punch!
Kya!
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 Horse stance! Palm heel strike, starting with the right. Are you ready?
All right!
Punch!
Kya!
Punch!
Kya!
Punch!
Kya!
Punch!
Kya!
Punch!
Kya!
Punch!
Kya!
Horse stance! Straight foot back, five stance! Front snap kick! Kick!
Kya!
Kick!
Kya!
Kick!
Kya!
Kick!
Kya!
Kick!
Kya!
Switch!
Kya!
Switch!
Kya!
Switch!
Kya!
Switch!
Kya!
Switch!
Kya!
Left side, front snap kick, kick!
Kya!
Kick!
Kya!
Kick!
Kya!
Kick!
Kya!
Kick!
Kya!
Horse stance! Pass! Ready!
All right!
Very good. Face the Mayor's office, that way to your, to your left. It's right there. Bow! Very good. Face the audience. Bow! Very good. That's a brief presentation, thank you. Next question is speaking about, how we get next is our certificates. I have to point out that I share a title of professor on seventh degree, seventh Don, and I just happen to share that with, with my chief and close friend. He also has a professorship in the system that we study for over 25 years, seventh degree. So in protocol and decorum, whenever we're in a room with another master of professor level, the high level, we always call him down. What we have tonight is, you know, when I started this program with the kids, it was something that I started where I thought, okay, I'm gonna give them a, a certificate of, um, participation. Eight-week program, it's no big deal, but when we got into the program, each and every one of these kids, as you just saw, this is only eight weeks, that in the martial arts world, I've been doing it for 36 years, it's this much time, but at the end of the, at the end of the time, I looked at each one, I said, you know, I can't, they, they have earned a yellow belt. By all protocol, they have earned a yellow belt. And so to honor them, I wanna have, and tonight they're gonna officially promote them with our official certification from Bundelan Hawaiian Temple with the yellow belt. So, and without further ado, if we can maybe, everyone face, turn, face Mayor Jay and Professor Sivkar, we're gonna call y'all up. Oh sure, okay. Mayor had asked us for a little bit of a bio. The, the journey for me in the Hawaiian Temple was part of a family thing for my family. My family comes from the Hawaiian Islands and I'm native Hawaiian. So in our culture, for hundreds of years, we trace our lineage for the bodyguards of King Kamehameha, and so a lot of the martial arts that I was introduced, just a little boy growing up my whole life, comes from that background. So this isn't just something I decided to be a sports karate guy and get into it, I had never, I've never not known doing it. So, and then over the years, I make great friends, and so what this is about, our history with this is, John and I both have over 25 years' experience in this. John's also the president of Bundelan Martial Arts Association, I'm the vice president. We both hold the same degrees, we both have a lineage that comes directly from the masters in Cebu and Hawaii, so that's a big deal for us, it's an honor. And these kids, if they were to stay with us, will be considered second generation, that's a big deal in our world. So they earned that second generation today through the beginning of their, their mission as a yellow belt. This'll be the last one actually. So we're gonna call everyone up, and each person will come up, you'll shake my hand, the mayors, and Professor John, also you'll shake Lily's hand, okay? Okay, I'm just gonna call you by your first name, he's not here right now actually, 'cause y'all know who you are, and Alex says, I'll just give you your second one. Okay, Mark, we all know where Mark's at, please step forward. Shake Lily's hand. Mark, you've been promoted to the rank of yellow belt in Hawaiian Temple, that's an honor, this is your certificate for that. Okay. Jovan, where you at buddy, come on over here. Shake Lily's hand. Jovan, good job. Jovan, you've also been promoted to the rank of yellow belt in Bundelan Hawaiian Temple. Very good. Jason? Jason, shake hands. Good job, you also been promoted, continue, to the, the rank of yellow belt in Bundelan Hawaiian Temple, it's a wonderful achievement, good job Jason. Other gal in the class, and just like my daughter, she's tough as nails, very common for that, good job. And you too, Kayla, have been promoted to the rank of yellow belt, this is an honor for you, and I'm honored to have you in my class, very good. Jacob, I like Jacob. Jacob's name's just strong, I like that about him. Alright, so Jacob, once again, you also have been promoted to the rank of yellow belt. There you go young man, good job Jacob. Alex B. Here you are. And brother Alex, you too have been promoted to that rank. Alex came into class and stood out to me, he's just quiet, not very many expressions, just got the job done, always, that's what I appreciate about him. Danny was colorful as heck, I love Danny. Danny, he did a great job, he always made it interesting because he always had something to say, and he always was real helpful, he was always trying to do something else. Good job buddy. And that's important to us, that's part of our leadership program, good job Danny, you're also a gold. Alex C. Come on out Alex. Alex, Alex is someone else that stands out to me, because Alex, in every karate school you have the one kid that's so excited that they just, oh my god, just jumps out of their body as they're doing it, that was Alex. Literally, he's just, everything was just this big expression, but by the end of the class, he had relaxed enough to be able to do it to a level that, again, they even want to promote every one of them to yellow belt, good job. And Joshua. Joshua, Joshua's another one, good job. Joshua already had some karate background, and he came to the class in a full uniform. Of course, I was near and dear to my heart to see him in a white tee, so that's one of the things, and, and because he was already in that class, he was able to get the program, and being one of the leaders that stood out also, good job Joshua. Ruben, I wanna thank Ruben for doing this, and then there's one other person that's very important to me here, and it's my daughter Lily. She holds a brown belt in our style, and she's been practicing since she was just a little girl, and her job was to help be my security blanket, because I hadn't taught kids in a long time. And when you teach adults for so many years, it was almost intimidating for me, 'cause I didn't know how to talk to them, or you know what I mean? And, and with her helping me, it helped me kind of understand kind of what I needed to do, but by the end of it, thanks to her and thanks to a great class, I was able to relax, and Lily, this is for you and a recognition for you. Good job class! Good job everyone, Joshua lead us up.
This time, item number F, open to the public agenda items, don't worry. If you have something pertaining to the agenda, come forward, and lower your hands three minutes, give your name and address if you want, please. Next, we have consent agenda. Undertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'd like to remove item four on the consent agenda.
Anybody else? Undertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with item four to go. Holston, Razik, roll call please.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Hop?
Yes.
Razik?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
And Gray?
Yes.
Okay, item's removed from the consent agenda. Item number four. Do we need discussion on that?
I just wanted to, just so I can get it out there, I did get to talk to, I did have several questions again this month, that Darryl was able to answer me, he did a lot of homework for me, so I appreciate it. And I do really like the way he does the descriptions and the check registers now, we really have a good description of exactly what is being paid, so I appreciate that. And because of that too, and I would like to bring up, some of the ones that I have never seen before, and so he was able to explain it, and some of them obviously do concern me, and he was able to answer them, but that being said, some of the ones, large amounts that I still wasn't satisfied with, but they're already paid. So I had talked to and thought about it in some of the other municipalities, and even in my experience in the school board, I brought it up a couple months ago, and because of these questions, I believe that we need a board policy stating that our check registers, or our checks should not be released until board approval, rather than after the fact. And I know we talked about it in Darryl's finance meeting, but I would like to bring it up, rather than waiting for a handbook, I think we need a board policy on this.
Thank you Mayor. There are certain bills, trustee Gonzalez, they have to be paid, you know, fairly promptly, sometimes seven to 10 days, if a policy would be drafted to at least account for that. Other bills are just 30 to 45 days, whatever, it's just a little not delinquent, once a delinquency hits, then it affects our credit for the future, but there are certain bills that have, that would need immediate attention.
And I totally understand that, and actually having done this in a, in a company with over 6,000 employees, I understand the need to get them out, you know, business seven to 10 days, but even if Darryl was willing, and we only have probably a couple dozen vendors, even if we drafted a letter for them saying that this is our new board policy, and, you know, policy says that bills where we bill paid the day after a board meeting, I think that would suffice, except, you know, if we're noted, the ones that need immediate attention.
And I would agree with trustee Gonzalez, I've done some research as well, in most municipalities, they're able to pay after approval, not before. With proper planning, I think we should be able to, you know, there's a, you know, I talked about normally utility bills, and those things should all flow naturally. It's kind of useless to sit here and approve something after the fact, so if we tell you we don't like it, you are paying the bill.
Right. Darryl, if you could, are there, on a, and there again, I'm not sure exactly which ones are in what sequence in that specifically, over the course of time that you've been here, what are the types of bills that typically are getting paid prior to board approval? Have you kind of identified which categorically they are? Yeah, go ahead.
We have utility bills that, of course, need to go out on a monthly basis, and those tend to fall, you know, some on the 6th of the month, some toward the end of the month, it all depends, but we try and get those out when we can to avoid any late fees. There are some circumstances where there may be, one that strikes my mind is the building department, we may have a, a building, I guess, seminar that needs to be done, and with that being said, we need to get a check to them immediately. Things of that nature are sometimes things that come up that, that we need to get a check out for. One, recently, we have Easter coming up, and I know that there's a inspection that needs to be done, that, you know, without that being done, we can't carry on the Easter events that, that need to be done.
So, in my mind too, we all budget in our home the same way. I know that I get paid on the 15th and the 30th of the month, so guess what, my bills get scheduled that way. And I don't think, even maybe with one month, it'd be one month that we'd have, you know, scattered payments, but that, you know, a very good schedule, looking at the things that we're doing every single month, there's not one, and I used the analogy a couple months ago with DJ, about our door thing, you know, we knew we had a proposal in front of us, we knew that we could schedule that installation for a $6,000 expenditure, and it was gonna happen on the 31st of whatever month. That guy knows, okay, you know, immediately after his door is installed, and after our board meeting, he's gonna get paid. So that being said, I don't think, and like I said, we did it in corporations, 6,000 people, I really, and looking at these, I really don't think it'd be hard, and I'd be happy to help if you want to help do letters or whatever.
So are you, and let me just, so that I'm clear on this, so that we understand the expectations of the board, 'cause it's gonna be up to Darryl to implement it. Are you wanting it to be, across the board, are you wanting it to be, without exception, no bill gets paid before the AP warrant list is presented to the board? I just want to clarify that, so that I understand if it's, if, are there gonna be exceptions, or is this everything? Just so that I know.
Well, and I think there...
Hold on, I'm, I'm just asking the board, because they're the ones that are making this direction.
Well, and in talking to Larry too, and looking at some of the other policies for other things too, I think we can note for some exceptions, because we all know, last minute stuff does happen, whether we have a watermaid break and, you know, acts of God, that we have no way to plan more. But I believe with proper notification of such vendors, they know that this is our policy, and I think it can be thereto. I don't think that it can't be or won't be without exception, but I think using best practices, we can come up with a pretty darn good policy quickly.
Most of these events, I know I'm a bit smug, I kinda say this, but Easters every year, same time, expenses typically can't be budgeted, but I manage a $10 million per year facility that doesn't pay anything special, I think, without approval.
Well, you know, same thing, following your lead, you bring up the public health department for Easter, that building's been used prior to Easter, it's not like it's said dormant since... But it's an annual permit, right? So...
Well, it, it's something that just came to my desk today, so, you know, without prior notice, I, I wasn't aware of that.
So you, so you're just saying that's one exception?
Right, and even this next week, so...
Okay, so if it came to your desk, then... And what's a hundred bucks?
Pardon me?
What's a hundred bucks?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's not much at all.
No, it's understandable, but like...
But we can budget for it, if we know what the office or, you know, what our office or any of the offices or, you know, the community events that are happening, we can budget for it and have it say that, okay, next month, we're gonna have to pay this bill, you know, in expectation of being...
I guess the other question has to do with whether or not something is part of the known budget and expectations of, you know, and there again, we are working on policies internally, and I appreciate your concern, and, and I think, I'm sorry, I think he has some legitimate points of relevance on that, and that is that, you know, we've also talked about the process of implementing purchase orders, it's never been done here before. You know, there, there's, there's a method to making sure things are done and they're accountable. For the first time, about a month ago, Darryl was implemented a, if there's a check to be issued, you can't just say, here, check for whatever, there's a yellow form that gets submitted with an explanation and what line item on the budget and everything else, to make sure it's relevant, and it's not just somebody arbitrariously saying, hey, gotta check this one, so, you know, there's, there's that process.
I think that is a perfect example of doing purchase orders, that we can plan for the next two weeks, and the next two weeks, perfect.
Right. And, and if, if we're gonna go that route, that, there, there will be a, you know, a period in which we will incur some, some charges, you know, until we can get everyone on a, on a schedule, if, if we're gonna go that route. But, you know, typically, we, we do have the utility bills, and, you know, those go out as, as normal, and, and, you know, I don't see any reason why the utility bills can't be done. I think there may be a strain on, you know, if, if there's an emergency, I don't know what, what would be the, the protocol for, for something like that, I'm sure we can come up with something, but, yeah.
One of the things that I know that we've been working on is making it a more predictable expectation of what's gonna come around the corner, so that typically in November, in December, you cancel the second meeting, because it ends up falling right on Thanksgiving or Christmas like it was last year, or something like that. And with those anticipations of those things happening, if the finance director can be anticipating certain things that might need to get paid, or, you know, we just have to make those considerations at that time of the meeting, prior to that, saying, by the way, while we're gonna be gone for the next meeting, these types of bills are typically gonna come up, I need board consent to pay those without waiting a month before the next meeting.
And I don't even think it needs to go to that level, truly, because if, if that's something that we know that if we put in our policy the right way, I think all of those can, and this is just me, so I'm just, I'm, you know, speaking up, but I think it can be done easily within the expectation.
Yeah, and I, that's actually interesting, 'cause I was talking to the chief a while back regarding that issue, and I wasn't aware of this, but he, historically, he reminded me that it used to be the board meeting, it was once a month anyhow, and the reason why I went to two meetings a month, I believe, you had to, it had to do with the fact that, you know, as the village grows, you're gonna have a more, you know, continuity of information that needs to be approved and all that sort of thing. So, I mean, the role of the board is as a legislative policy setting body of government and, or branch of government, and it's important for you guys to have the ability to inspect and to review and set the expectations on what those policies are. And with, without much exception, we'll just say without much exception, and the burden's gonna be on Darryl, to make sure that there's not exceptions to that, then I think, I don't see any reason why that would be a problem. Darryl's just gonna have to make sure... Daryl's just going to have to make sure that if there's going to be a pattern of exceptions that might come up, I don't want to have to come to that before the board in two months and say, why aren't we paying these late fees?
But then, if you're kind of reaching in terms of pattern of exceptions, if there's a pattern that's not...
No, I'm saying historically, I'm asking him off the spot right now. If I would have known this question yesterday or today or something like that, I could have asked Daryl to kind of prepare for this question, but I didn't. So I'm asking Daryl to review, not off the top of his head, but historically, in the time he's been here, what are the exceptions that have been reasonable prepayments, if you will, before board approval? And we've also been working on, Daryl, if I can, we've also been working on a, an internal policy, if you will, that has to do with, let's say you have a job approved, like an engineering job, and it ends up being $70,000, it's approved by the board. We've been working on, Locust is not exactly the most business-friendly database system, but if you apply standards from other business industry software of that sort, you would actually put the bill in for the full amount, and you would only pay off based on what was remaining, instead of having to, every time a bill comes in, you have to tagulate on the bottom of that one how much is left, which is how it's been done in the past. So theoretically, you could overpay somebody if human calculations were not adequate. Daryl's in the process of trying to implement a better mechanism, so if there's a job pertaining to a contract or some sort that's going on, you know, he can actually do a look-up on that job by itself, and hopefully we can get Locust to cooperate with that, so that we're not overpaying, we're keeping things in check, we can look at all the transactions that are associated with a particular, and we're going to talk about just trail, but, you know, just something like that, we can say, I need you to pull all the transactions related to job number 153654, I dot, you know, something like that. And that would be the code project number or something, so he's working on that.
So, and I get it, and again, Daryl's been wonderful in answering all my questions, so I appreciate it. And he did know, you know, that some of this was coming, that I was going to bring it up. I told him that I was going to bring it up again, so he wasn't blindsided, right?
No.
Okay. And then I didn't mean it to be a long conversation too, but I just wanted to ask, and I would, on this, like to make a motion that our attorney would draw up a policy by the next meeting for at least us to even take a look at for a possible approval.
Where is, go ahead.
If I may, Mayor, I can hopefully, we've just been involved in another situation similar to this, a much larger scale, trust me. And we were, another place I worked with, we do have a similar policy, I probably showed their own, maybe helpful, they call it GASP or something, okay? And we were told there had to be certain exceptions, but policy, we were told to have it in writing, just to make sure in case of audit for the future or if we go off the bounds. So maybe I can show you what we've done in the other village, and historically, it's worked well, but there's got to be some latitude there, like you said, the combat bills or gas bills, or there's got to be some latitude, but if the board wants it, we have policies that work pretty well for us. And it's been, the budget's very large with 200 employees. So we do have latitude, but we have oversight, and it's helped us in our audit, so it might help you.
Could you have, could you have something for the board to review the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Is that okay?
So I just made a motion, so...
I don't know if it requires a motion, but that's fine.
Does he need a motion or a second?
Well, I agree, as long as the board knows, I'll bring it in, you know, for the board's review and consideration, I'll send a copy of the bill beforehand, and whatever by...
By the next meeting, well, prior to that, within the next week and a half. Is that okay?
If I could add to that a little bit?
Yes, sir.
As I understand the issue, and I've also been working with Daryl in that full confidence in the issue, I don't see any pressure on Daryl at all, actually. I think the issues on the department heads who do the planning and the purchase order and do that work to do their due diligence, so that his job becomes a lot easier. I've heard a lot of discussion about utilities, I know for a fact that if you tell the dealer that we pay on the person on the 15th, they'll work with you on that. I've done, and they'll work their schedules around, that's not a problem. If you need help, I'll be happy to help you with that, that I will. This is about planning ahead, so that the trustees actually get to do what we're charged to do, which is be responsible and approving expenditures before they're expended, not after they're expended. If the department heads and the administration is leading them, properly do their jobs, then there should be exceptions, but those should be exceptions not to more. And I think that's all that trustee Gonzalez has asked before, and that's fair.
Okay. And Larry, you're going to present something to Daryl? And then it'll be brought before the board then for...
We have a motion, a second, do you have a call?
I, I think it's just a directive, it's not a...
Yeah, I was going to say, that to me is, obviously, Larry, we trust that you will do that, you know. Is there any reason Heidi would like that, or not?
No, as long as, you know, I guess consensus that this is a...
As long as it's in the minutes, then Larry will take care of it, and, you know, second anything.
Larry just documented the minutes that Heidi requested, and Larry's going to follow through with providing the sample, for us to consider. Thank you. We're on items removed from the consent agenda, G4, any other discussion on G4? Or can I adjourn to motion to approve the items removed from the consent agenda?
Two, second.
Okay, that's Horn and Raisik.
Justine Pop?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
And Horn?
Yes.
Thank you.
Nothing else on that, I, Mr. Horn?
Here, I've got a couple of things. If Deputy Clerk Powell, if any of the residents are, if I've made copies or something that wasn't in the pack and not available, any residents are, you care to see what I want to discuss here briefly? When we went down for the Will County Government Lobby, I had some responsibilities that I let the mayor and the trustees talk about, but in my quiet time, I had an opportunity to meet some people. And the pictures, photographs that you're looking at, I didn't have with me at the time, but it's just kind of a pet peeve, I don't want to pet peeve things, but things I noticed around my own neighborhood. Utilities not taken care of, and I think the people who take care of utilities are very responsible with it, and AT&amp;T seem to be one of them. And I happened to run into Sam Valarc of AT&amp;T, and I've seen his card before, started talking with him, and his title is Director of Outside Activities or something like that. And I said, hey, Sam, you know, and I went through what I've seen in these pictures, and he said, well, send me some pictures, I'll take care of it. So I sent him the photographs, and low and behold, every one of those sites have new housings now, everything's been straightened out, everything's been set up, and I thanked him for it, and he said, thanks for making me aware of it. So I think that's a good job to go. And I was going to ask for an ordinance, you know, kind of like if you did the grass fence, you're making houses. And Sam was in good contact, and I think if we have issues in the future with AT&amp;T, we know where to go to. So that's the photographs.
Thank you.
I also established good communication with Representative Thaddeus Jones. There was a group of us in a meeting with him, and the governor made a surprise speech that day, it kind of took everybody's meeting times out of their, set times. So the group from Will County that was meeting with him, gave me somebody just to grab a hold of the situation, so I got everybody's emails and made sure Representative Jones is in contact with everybody in the area, which is to our benefit, so I was glad to do that. Later in the evening, I met Michael Richard, who happens to be the legislative liaison with the Illinois Emergency Management Agency, and I just bumped into him accidentally, but when I saw his card, I obviously knew that I needed an visit to our EMA director. So I think he'd be invaluable with resources for Ruben, and I mean, he's a contact guy and, and Springfield. So I think that's, that's good for our future. Additionally, in this past week, Napoleon Harris has sent our office a letter about financial scams with the burden of finances today and all foreclosures. So we're going to have a copy of this posted in the lobby, and it's, if you're interested, I can get you copies as well, and it's just showing that our representatives are listening to us and feeling our pain. Also on that, Senator Hutchison announced simultaneously with Kankakee School District 111, the Growing Colors of the Rainbow, they're having a multicultural teacher recruitment fair Saturday, April 26th. Again, we've got information in the hall posted about that, anybody interested in getting more information on that? And then last but not least, there's the South Suburban Mayors and Managers Association announced the Spring 214 Household Hazardous Waste Collections, which I think could be important to everybody. And I'll try to get this up on the marquee outside with Deputy Clerk Powell, and hang something in the hallway as well.
What date is that, mindset?
Well, there are two dates, May 3rd at Aran Valley, June 28th at Eisenhower High School, and then they've got a matrix of other sites for different categories, so I'll make that. As a matter of fact, I'll put copies in each trustee's box, so you can do what you want with that to maybe spread the word. And then I think after public communication, that's it for me, sir. Do we have the trash update?
Uh, yeah, that's fine.
All right, you know, if you wanted to talk...
No, that's fine. I prefer not to talk trash in public.
Because they shoot the message, right? There's a trash rate increase July 1st. Again, this is in place some time since the new contract was negotiated with previous administration, but, you know, it's, it is what it is, it looks like it's a 10-year contract, and the trash rate goes up to 1469 July 1st. Oh, I'm sorry, 1589.
Per month.
I'm sorry, 1528 per month on July 1st, 2014, you have a show.
From 1469...
69 to 1528, yes.
Right.
And just in my report here.
And there's one other item, and I'll just mention it, and I'll get it through the clerk and I'll distribute it as well, and that was pertaining to, I think, AT&amp;T, which you mentioned earlier, is also involved in a, I believe it's a diversity job fair of some sort, and that's on April 14th, so that's coming up pretty soon. But I'll get that to the clerk, Deputy Clerk, and I'll get that posted here and distributed as well. Okay, thank you. All right, item I, one, recognition of South Suburban Mitsubishi. I want to bring to everybody's attention, you know, Mitsubishi's been here for quite a while under Gina's Auto Sales and various other labels that they've gone under, but this last month, Jim, help me out on this in case I get it wrong, the last, the previous record that they had set was 80 new cars sold in one month, which they're a phenomenal sales value compared to others throughout the Midwest. They've reached records, they're number one in the region, two or three months in a row.
Number one in the nation in sales in October.
Okay.
Number one in the nation in January.
Okay. But in March, they actually sold 94 new cars as well as 45, roughly, used cars? I'm doing it off the top of my head now, I had the notes in my, I'm sorry. They also, I mean, it's nice to see an employer in town that has roughly 40 employees. It's good to see at the various levels of involvement and that sort of thing. That actually, just so everybody's aware of it, because I know sometimes people are concerned because of the, they had an agreement that was implemented, I believe it was early 2011, that was a sales tax revenue sharing program. They had an opportunity, Larry helped me out on this, because this is before I was involved, but I believe they were being accorded to go to another community, and the board at the time determined the relevance of giving them a sales tax rebate, splitting that portion of it. And I'm glad you're still here, because it is nice to see this last month, the village generated through income, income, sorry, sales tax for the village itself was $13,560, something thereabouts. So that was money we received as a result of sales that took place, there are new or used cars and a few parts and stuff like that. So it's, they are a contributing part of our economy here, and, you know, I, just like we like to buy our gas at the gas stations, because there's an incentive because of the motor fuel tax, being local in some regards, you know, it's also good for us to be aware of the fact that we've got a valued business in town. We got a lot of valued businesses in town, I'm not trying to pick on one, but when they reach a landmark, just like the church reached a landmark down the street last week, you know, for Mitsubishi to have some record value in one month, that's, you know, we should be all proud of the businesses we have for their accomplishments. So I just want to bring that up.
And, and Mayor, it's important that a school leader of the community as far as making decisions and those kind of things, he had very serious offers to go to the auto mall or Tinley Park.
True.
And in fact, Mitsubishi, at the beginning, his inception refused to give him a license on a dealership here, because they said, Moni, no, you find another location. My point being that the incentives were given to him to keep them here, and I think that's good management by us.
Well, and...
Because we're getting some money from it.
Right. And admittedly, from what I understand, the, well, first of all, Mitsubishi manufactures a lot of their cars in Illinois, but they have international affiliation. It's kind of neat to think that we're an international community when you think about when the leaders from these companies that come in, and we got a foreign free trade zone over in the industrial park, we got a lot of things that are, you know, we, what was the other business that manufactures these, help me out on this, X-ray mobility trailers and things like that, that are being sold overseas. I think the last one we talked to you about was being shipped to Israel. So it's kind of neat to see Moni has actually got some pretty cool things going on here, be it import, export, it's kind of fun to see the potentially happen, so. Next item, number two, is approval of an intergovernmental public safety agreement. This has to do with what, for the trustees that are not aware of this, there's a organization, Chief, I'll refer you a little bit on this, but there's an organization that we participate in, that's for our communication services, for 911, et cetera, dispatch services for police, for our, in our cases, for police, sometimes they get involved with dispatching public horse and situations. But there are fire and everything else for all of these here in Will County, and now it's just recently been so well-run that they have included the South Heights and Stager...
South Heights, Stager, and Stager, et cetera.
Okay.
At least Stager and South Heights.
So it's being so well-run that there's other organizations that are joining into that group. They need us to update our intergovernmental agreement because of the new jurisdictions and new rules that accommodate some of those things. I can't sign with a board approval, I need to present it to the board in order to have authorization to sign. And Larry, I'm not sure, is that a resolution, or is that a...
You need a motion authorizing Mayor Farquhar to execute the same on behalf of the eligible Moni, the intergovernmental policy agreement, public safety agreement, I'm sorry, for the Eastern Will County Communications Center.
And would that be a resolution, or was that in a ordinance?
I think we need to ask for an ordinance, sir, but I believe they asked for the ordinance number when it's done there. In fact, in the last page, page four, they indicated ordinance number passed on such a date, so it should be an ordinance.
I'll return to the motion to approve what he said.
Second?
I'm sorry, second, yeah. Is that...
Is that the ordinance number, right?
That's my ordinance number. But that was Gray, and who seconded it? Raisik.
That'll be ordinance number 1677.
Any discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Justine Raisik?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
The next item, I-3, I-4, I-5, let's start with that. I-3, I-4, and I-5, could I have a, Mr. President, a document, a call in for us?
Good evening, Board. I-3 pertains to municipal outdoor lighting grants. I've been working with Michael Skarnes... I've been working with Michael Skarns of 360 Energy Group. If you recall, this is the same group that we worked with to get our indoor municipal lighting. All the municipal buildings were outfitted interior-wise. Now we want to do the same with the exterior. Over the last few months, we've been working on this, and with approval of this, the simple payback would be about 2.4 years. We'd save about $2,808 a year in energy costs, and we will reduce carbon dioxide emissions by 63,200 pounds per year, just by doing a lighting upgrade around the municipality. The bids are out, but they've come back a little less than $5,000. I'm just using that as our rough estimate because of what the Moni Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus are providing along with the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. They're going to pay for about $9,570.56 of it. I'm asking to proceed with this. If the most we end up paying out of pocket would be about $5,029.44.
Will this be budgeted in the next year's budget?
It will be handled under the next year's budget, and yes, it is. It's going to be from multiple buildings, since all of the municipal buildings are going to be done in this, so some of it will come out of the Village Hall, some of it will come out of the Public Works. Both Public Works buildings, some of it will also come out of the wellhouses. Any exterior light, with exception to the lights for the water tower, those lights, they don't, they do not have an exceptional or qualified LED replacement for those. I looked into it, I tried really hard. What we have right now for the water tower lighting can't be retrofitted at this point. There may be improvements in the future to save on the kilowatts there, but right now it's pretty much all the exterior lighting for the municipality.
Are these ones that go on and off automatically?
They all are on photocell currently, and yes, it will be the same.
We have them out there. I hope to approve.
Okay. And Pop?
Thank you.
Any more discussion on that?
Do we want to make a motion not to exceed a certain amount, or? I'm willing to give the superintendent a little bit of leeway, like you said, estimated, yes, I mean, estimated numbers that we're seeing.
What's the latitude you mean, do you mean? Not to exceed, without presenting it back to the board for additional approval?
You know, again, best judgment always prevails, 5,500. I really believe we'll come in over the 5,029, but you know, 5,100, 5,200, whatever the board feels is, is something we need to see.
Since there's a motion on the table...
Right.
I wasn't worried about that only because if it's coming out of his budget and he overspends, it'll come out of his budget and he won't be able to buy something else next year.
It's going to come out of his pocket for the budget. It's actually the building expense, but yes, it's...
He's got a pretty lean pocket, so don't go, don't go, don't go attacking his pockets.
He wants to spend all his money on that?
It's for the municipality, it's not for me. Personally, as much as I would...
He's not putting sex work in his own backyard or anything.
I'd like to have that with lighting and stuff.
But it's a good time to bring this up.
Sure.
Maybe on projects like this moving down the road, we, we look at a lot of people, businesses and agencies, and say plus or minus 10%. So if this is going to go over 10% of what we approved, then, you know...
10% would be enough.
That's, exactly, that's why I brought the buffers on and actually DJed in the exact number I got written here, you know, 5,500.
The board, you add plus or minus 10% to these, and that makes it a lot of...
That's fine, so, so that being said...
I'll amend my motion, I'll amend my motion to plus or minus 10%.
Second one, I'll see.
You still suck your off, I just spent less.
Correct, and I always try to.
Okay, that's fine. Any more discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
And Racic?
Yes.
Item number I-4 on the agenda is exterior 500,000 gallon water tower clean.
It's pretty much self-explanatory, it's needed it, it's never been done. I have two proposals from highly rated companies here that are licensed bonded, have all the proper training and personnel to be able to do this. Giant Maintenance being of the best proposal given. I'm asking to enter into a contract with Giant Maintenance and Restoration for the sum of $4,280. And that should be a targeted number that shouldn't exceed, and this is a budgeted expense already. And depending on the area, we kind of are in a unique area with a truck stop located right underneath it, where trucks can run constantly 24/7. We're targeting the cleaning for anywhere from two to four years on an average life expectancy, but I'm not sure how the surrounding area with, with trucks running at a car wash or parked in a spot, how long this will last. So they're going to do a three-step process with the third step being an anti-enzyme to help keep the bulb down. We're going to try it, we're going to see. It's the first time this process has ever been done to this tower, it's well overdue, and I think it will be more appealing to the eye for Moni.
And just on a side note on that, I know probably last June, I think it was, Larry, we discussed, and then we prepared some documentation for us to consider advertising on that water tower. The deficiency we have is that we can't do what business logo or whatever else on that water tower until such time as we get a second significant water tower to balance the load, because that won't have to be primarily, pretty much drained down to the throat in order for it to be stripped and...
Maintenance, correct.
Maintenance in that regard. Otherwise, you get the condensate or whatever on there that's not going to be applicable for that sort of thing. So just so I want the board to be aware, as we're talking about potential for a second water tower significance and all that, there is a possibility, if we use like Olympia Fields as an example, of generating, I think it was $60,000 or $70,000, $60,000 a year in advertising off that water tower, that could help defer some of our costs in some of these maintenance type things. So this is something we need to do in the interim.
We do generate some off of this tower with cell carrier providers, but yes, to get into a maintenance contract, if we can get I-8 approval, would definitely help bring in some, some extra revenue for that site. Currently, we don't have that there, considering the tower's over 10 years old and it's never been cleaned.
It was cleaned on the inside last year.
Inside, and with that report gave me a pretty good understanding how long we have before we're going to have to take it out of service to, to take care of the interior. So we'll talk about the need for a new tower at a later date.
Okay, so we've got a, do we have a motion on that?
Second one, no. We did the first one, he's on...
Frankel, we don't have a motion for that. Are we still in discussion, or do we want to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, Gonzalez and Gray.
Thank you, Board.
And roll call, please.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Racic?
Yes.
Yes.
Mike Clark?
Genom number, genom number I-5 is the public work copier purchase. Back when we had copiers replaced throughout the municipality, Public Works got a black and white copier and fax machine. With the increased need for color copies, for maps, color scanning, it's become quite a burden on the department to have to use scanners, copiers, this, you know, you have to buy more ink, more toner. Currently, speaking with, in discussion with Ruben Batista, who heads up the EMA Department, their location has no services to be able to receive faxes or copiers. I'm asking that we repurpose this copier over to the EMA Department, where they will be able to utilize it for training purposes as well as receiving faxes when they need to, scanning items, putting it into archive folders, so on and so forth. This is similar to the same copier that was purchased at the Police Department back in October 2013. I did manage to get it a little cheaper than the Police Department did for, the quote is provided, I believe, I'm here for $85.78. If there's any questions, I'm happy to...
Will this have a maintenance contract on?
Will have a maintenance contract, and I've worked out with the maintenance contract to coincide with the rest of the remaining contracts that we have. So that as they come up for renewal, we can re, I guess, try to negotiate terms on those.
If you're out of luck, we'll show you on the spot, but is purchase better than leasing on something like this, from your perspective?
Yeah, it is. Yes, we did purchase all the other copiers when we found the need at that time, so.
And I'm sorry if you already said this, where exactly is DPW 2?
Located at the new water tower right behind the Amaco Station in Blue Beacon. That's where the other Public Works building is located, for those of you that may have not been there.
So how is the EMA Department going to use it over there?
Because that's where they do their training. And I had offices over there that were utilized when the Water Department and Public Works were separated. They built this building, and they were over behind there. It's kind of a burden to get back into that building at times when you need to, as well as get equipment out. During the talks when Ruben started his EMA Department, I've more than offered these offices and training facilities to them, so that they can have their meetings in those offices. We were able to get, acquire a bunch of office furniture from World Kitchen when they want out of business, and I was able to facilitate a complete operational training center with desks and, and office space for those. And they have a full kitchen to be able to utilize after hours training or meals as needed. And the only thing it's missing is a copier and scanner and a fax machine. And this one still would have a contract, I've already negotiated that, it would still pick up, they would still be able to service it, and it would just be relocated to another facility for use of somebody else to use.
I have one question. On the unit that you're looking for from DPW, does that take the same cartridges and such as one of the Police Department?
It's the exact same unit that the Police Department has.
Just to clarify, just to have a little bit of redundancy on some of those.
Very similar, same thing as all the other units that we have that are colored.
Sure.
I didn't need it to hole punch, or you know, specific things, I drove the price up on that.
And the voluntary EMA, I've been over that facility, and most of what they've got in there, they have been able to get donated, which is very good. This is the one thing they would purchase, so I would approve.
Go ahead, second.
Holston.
Ms. Holston and Racic. Any more discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Racic?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes. Thank you, Board, that's all I had.
In case anybody's been paying attention around here, and I know you have, we are currently without an administrator for the village. We're talking with the village attorney. We're discussing our form of government, we're not a managerial form of government. Oftentimes, an administrator is implemented as a, mimicking, if you will, managerial forms of government, which we are not. I'm not opposed to having an administrator. The, the issue is, is currently we, we don't have one. I feel like the office has been run pretty efficiently with a split on a soft designation of the EMA Director also doing the administration of external services, overseeing Public Works, police, things like that, which would be the same thing as if there was a crisis of some sort, that would be the hierarchy of that situation at that time as well. Internally, the assistant administrator has been overseeing the internal operations of the Village Hall, that's the way it's been operating. Unfortunately, it's one of those things where sometimes people feel the need, I'll use an example, like the children of Israel did years ago, many thousands of years ago, they felt the need to have a king, you know, and it didn't mean that it was necessarily the best, but that's what they wanted. Sometimes people are acclimated because of paradigms and things of that sort, where they feel the need to have a single point, not at what we've had to this point temporarily, there's two points, one inside, one outside. Based on the fact that I hear the, I'm hearing the concern and the need to have one person point designated as that point of contact up the top of the chain, if you will, for purposes of consistency with what other people's expectations are inside or outside. I would like to designate Ruben Batista to fill the role of village administrator until such time as we have a full-time designated administrator. That means that, I mean, basically, he's been doing a lot of it. I've also talked to the assistant administrator, Barb, she understands and she agrees. And I just want to clarify here, a lot of people realize that when it comes to the role of, there are certain things that you need to have. For the first time, the village has a finance director. There are certain things when it comes to certain levels of compliance, you know, we got a treasurer.
You got here, right?
Yeah, he left. He left the building, okay. You know, and I like the fact that these are qualified, quality people that are hold us accountable on the levels of things that are necessary for compliance in their specific areas of expertise. One of the things that I believe that we have effectively accomplished in the first year has been, we've set a good community tone for the village. I've heard a lot of compliments, of course I hear a lot of criticism too, but I, generally speaking, the compliments that I've heard don't have so much to do with me as it does to do with the fact that the staff is engaged in the community perspectives, you know, we got the chief doing martial arts, I'm sorry, one of the officers doing martial arts, the chief doing the self-defense for women, things like that. We've got the ministerial alliance that's operational for the first time. We've got a lot of things that are going on here, and we're setting the right community culture for our community, for our village to prosper, to be taken note of as a place where people want to live, with their businesses too, things of that sort. Many of you know that I've known Ruben before he was hired here. As a matter of fact, he came here from Alabama because I asked him to. He picked up his family, moved back here to Illinois. I think that one of the things that people look at, and they say, well, let's say I'm not very good at, what was the word you used, extemporaneous communication? I'm much better on 111. It doesn't make me a bad mayor, it just makes me bad at public speaking in some cases. I look at the people we have here, and we're setting a culture internally now that we haven't done before. We had a meeting the other day where we had the management and the labor leaders all got together for a combined meeting. It's the first time this has ever happened. It's showing that we can work together and work beyond our differences and things like that. That was pulled together because of Ruben, things like that. I think that the, you know, we've got people in the house in various departments, we want to groom and develop them from the inside up. And frankly, you know, we need to be finding, in some perspectives, you say, you groom your replacements. You know, I would like to think that I'll be mayor another term, or two, or three, or four, or whatever, it doesn't really matter, okay. But, but my point is, my point is, is if I'm not going to be for any reason, I want to make sure I'm doing everything I can to instill the opportunity for the next one to do it better. And I think the same thing, what's that? I think the same thing needs to be from the inside, from the execution of the way we develop our staff. You know, we've had employees here that frankly, are on the verge of losing their jobs in some cases, not necessarily because they're incompetent or incapable, but just because, you know, we didn't know how to work with them to find their optimal placement, and develop them to be the best they can be in those places. And I think that's something that we need to do inside to encourage, you know, we got in our collective bargaining events, we have some of them stipulating, you're supposed to try to promote them from within. Well, we ought to be doing that anyhow, you know? We need to be training up the people that are going to either replace us or supplement what we're doing so we can move on to something else. You know, because our town is going to grow. If you talk about the potential of development in one form or another in our immediate and surrounding areas, our town's going to grow. We're a little town right now, 51, 5200 people, but five years, 10 years from now, where are we going to be? And who do we have equipped to fill those voids? Point being is, I've got the greatest confidence that we put the right people in the right places, and we groom everybody for opportunities of development. And you know, the day will come where, you know, we may find another way of looking at things as far as, as far as identifying, hey, maybe we should have somebody who's a different administrator or something like that. That's fine, okay? But for right now, because we don't have one, I'm looking to make that designation temporary or otherwise, it's not a big deal with me right now. It's not a big deal with me right now because frankly, if, no matter how it gets classified, I need somebody in that position, not for my sake necessarily, but because there's other people that look for that structure and that flow. So Larry, do I, do I, how does that?
Under the current ordinance, Mayor, you have the right to make a selection as a permanent administrator with the advising consent of the board. On a temporary basis, you have that right, but there should be more input with respect to the individual.
So, I may ask you, the board, did you say that again?
Under the current ordinance, if it's on a permanent basis, the mayor has the right to select an individual with the advising consent of the board and trustees. Our current ordinance, I talk about a temporary or internal basis. I believe the mayor would have that right, probably the board's input.
And I don't know that it requires, I hope that I'm going to put it out there because, you know, frankly, I think it needs to be something where you guys recognize the relevance of what I'm trying to accomplish, and I believe you do. You know, some of us ran together on a slate when we ran, some of us agreed and some of us disagreed. Today, we still disagree on different things. But we don't have as much a model heads. We don't have to worry about the perspective that we're all going to agree on everything. That's okay. But we need to be able to identify our strengths together and work together to make this the best time possible can, and I appreciate everybody's input.
Mayor, I might say that I think some of the trustees, looking at one for sure, I'm uncomfortable talking about personnel unless we're in the executive session. I would like to table this until we're in the executive session tonight. Come back and if that's the time you want us to vote, I, because we're dealing with personnel, you know, personnel. Things might be said, like whoever, it might be uncomfortable, but I'm just saying.
I just, I hear what you're saying. I need to confirm, if it's a matter of personnel, but if it's not a matter of disciplinary or things of that sort, do we have the ability to deal with those in executive session?
Yes. If the personnel matters irrespective of disciplinary or hiring, whatever, it's on the agenda also, so you do have the right to discuss it.
Adding to trustees' comment, do we want to do this, do we want to discuss this tonight? Or do we want to sit on this because as our mayor has said in the past, surprises to us. It's on the agenda, but it doesn't say where he's going with this. This is something we need to think about, not within the next hour. This is something we need to contemplate more than just an hour and then not jump to anything irrational.
Whether the mayor acts upon that or not, it's just all not ours anyway. I'd like to discuss it tonight for sure.
Okay, I'm doing it because I know my own. I've had lunch on your own night.
Bring it up to share.
So there's a motion to table this?
Well, it doesn't need to be. There's no motion to do anything with it.
Do this in the executive session. Or table this, which should work. That's what I was going, we want to think about this instead of discussing it within an hour and then jumping to conclusions or, you know, saying stuff without, we've tabled other things, thinking about it, you know, other, I mean, to appoint a certain individual administrator. I mean, we've gone around, this is a pretty big deal. This isn't, this isn't, you know, we're going to get another best food place here. This is a big deal that not only concerns us trustees as village folks too. We are, you know, village folks as well as trustees, so this is not something we should jump right into within the next forty-five minutes.
If I may, the board has a right to go in the executive session and talk about it and feel comfortable thereafter, then you can decide to take action, not take action. So there's no harm in going into the executive session, talk about it, and if you don't feel comfortable at that point in time, that's one thing. If you do feel comfortable, at least you preserve your right.
Okay, item number seven. Status and actions to be taken regarding the Egyptian Trail IDOT project.
Yes, Mayor, we met with Tech Three Consulting for today and DJ and myself to look at the status of where we're at with Egyptian Trail project. When we met, we received from them the location drainage study, three options to road configuration. They're passing out the proposal plan. That's what you're receiving now, the geometry plan and also soil sample study. In our meeting with them, there was a few issues that were brought up. One major issue that we're at right now is the crossroads that we'll have to make a decision, and it's a drainage issue.
Ruben, when did you say the meeting was?
Today. This morning, ten o'clock. We have been, we've contacted them several times over the last few weeks.
The question came up, how did you get on the agenda for tonight's meeting if we didn't have any, I mean, we have no information, now we're just getting that. And we just had the meeting this morning. We didn't have time to look at this or even give a call to discuss. How did it go?
Sure.
What, you know?
First of all, it was put on the agenda because we needed to have a status on this because it's taken too long. Should have taken four months and it's taken over two years.
Right.
Okay. I put it on the agenda because I wanted to have a status on this. At the time at which I put it on the agenda, the firm that has been dealing with this was virtually, virtually not responsive. And I needed to present it to the board, whether we had paperwork or anything from them or not. Mr. Batista and Mr. Grisell met with them today and what you have in front of you was not even provided to the village prior to this date at all. So the reason why I put it on the agenda is because the people in our town have a right to know why their roads are in such bad shape and for so long.
All the roads are, I absolutely agree.
So they had to be on the agenda to even have a point of discussion, and if there was need to deal with the vote and we go into executive session for litigation or anything else, it would have had to have been on there so that we could have taken action if necessary to deal with it. Did we have anything for certain? No. So it was put on the agenda as a talking point and for potential action if needed. We're not calling for any action at this time specifically from the board. This is a status update.
So if this meeting didn't take place today, I would just be telling you, we're still waiting for a vote by this time. Yes, exactly. So because it happened today and they provided the proposed plan, that's why I'm providing the board with that now. So, and that is not a final plan, but that is one of three plans that they proposed. This was the most viable option, which they sent to us. But as I was saying earlier, the major issue that we're going to deal with, with this project is a drainage issue. If you look along Egyptian Trail on the west side of the roadway, there is a twelve-inch drainage pipe for water runoff and it meets up to Manhattanoni Road. At that point, first, Tech Three tells us that the pipe is undersized. It's a twelve-inch pipe. If we were to, it's a restricted flow. And what we'd have to do is to, one, one of the options is either run it across the roadway underneath and tap into Will County's line, which is a twenty-four inch line. So we would have to change the structure, the configuration to make that tapping work. They did reach out to Will County Highway and were told no, that we would not be able to do that. This was an earlier issue, I think, with Culvers bringing the same, same situation. The other option was to ground it ground and build a, give me a storage container underneath which would cost the village roughly two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars is the approximate cost. The third option would be to put in a detention pond in a five-acre parcel adjacent east of that intersection. And that would take about an acre or so to put that detention pond in. And of course, if, in the bigger picture, we'd like to do something with that. The intersection of the village property and that would obviously cause some major issues and concerns. So those are the three options presented to us as issues we're going to have to come up with a pretty quick solution.
What steps have you taken subsequent to that meeting?
Well, right after the meeting, we reached out to IDOT. IDOT is of course partnering with us on this project, so they're well aware of the steps that have been taken thus far, which haven't been many. But they are aware of the situation. We, I reached out to Secretary Anne Schneider's office to speak to her contact person regarding this. We need a solution. We need it quickly. We met last week on other issues with IDOT and so they saw firsthand the issues on Egyptian Trail. They know the problems. And they actually were quite surprised by what the villages had to endure the last few years, the conditions of the road. So Secretary Schneider has seen it. She knows what we're talking about. And I was given a point of contact. They're going to reach out to their engineers and see what they can do on their within their office to help us to come up with a viable solution. Obviously, this is going to affect the cost of the project. It's, we're looking, we're off the bat. If we do a detention pond, that's another issue. So we're waiting for a response and to meet with the engineers to see what we can do to move forward regarding that.
So as far as the tie-in with Will County, they rejected that out of hand. Is that something our reps, our county reps, Bob, Howard, Judy, Odala can go to bat for us on?
Yeah, they can, and in the past, we've reached out to them on the Culvers issue. Unfortunately, getting the county highway department, who kind of oversees the stormwater issues as well, to understand the relevance of economic development, things like that, it's not a pressing matter to them. They look at every, every piece of impervious surface as another hindrance to water flow and not the potential savings or economic development or things like that that take place. So we have some problems there, but I believe Ruben is in the process also of trying to coordinate with the Will County Government League, coordinator that we've dealt with, as well as Judy, Bob. And I know DJ met with Judy and David Deutcher, they're in stormwater management projects. We're in the process now of trying to get DJ to actually be a member of the county stormwater management committee. It feels like it takes an act of God, but she's needed a dozen signatures from all the other mayors.
But that's also in the works and we've already received.
So there's things, there's probably at least three projects we know that Moni needs to deal with, and our surrounding area needs to deal with on stormwater management. This is just one of them. So.
Has there been any discussion on this to widen this or is it still intended to be just a two-lane?
This is the first that I'm seeing of this with just an hour and a half, two, well, I guess two or three hours, you know, when I get back in town.
Single, single lane.
Edge direction.
Stay away with turnings in the center of lanes, so we have an option to pull off and take your turn to whatever. Is the proposed plan.
The one you're currently looking at?
Yeah, this plan is not set in stone, just so that you guys are aware. This is a conceptual drawing that has not been approved through IDOT yet. It's just one that they thought would work the best. And they presented it. We kind of bookmarked it. We blew it out. We gave it to you to just get some feedback. There's still many steps that have to be done, as Ruben's explaining, to the project, and one of them is, I won't steer the project.
Well, talk away.
The turnings would be similar to what we have right now throwing Manhattan Moni, going into different businesses. Pull over to a turning lane.
Sure.
Traffic would continue in both directions.
It basically feel like it does right there near the intersection.
Except for the bridge.
So that's the first hurdle, obviously, is what we do with this runoff water and our tie-in. So we are, we've got a few steps. It is a full court press. We're on the phone all day today, making our phone calls, trying to to get some partners with us to help us with this project. The second thing that we would have to do immediately is put out a notice. We have to send flyers along to the residents along this project, that they would be notified of a public informational hearing. That hearing would consist of Tech Three consultants, the village, and also the residents that were already brought in and to give, be given a presentation. We would have the proposals up, tacked up on the walls so the residents can see it, view for themselves. And we would be available with questions and answers to, and taking any comments that they may have and input. These comments would be logged, documented, and then that is forwarded to IDOT. IDOT will then review the comments from the public from this meeting and then that is part of their approval with whether or not we vote to the next phase, which is phase two. Once we move then into phase, upon with IDOT's approval, we would then move into phase two. Phase two consists of immediately land acquisition and easement rights. We would need a negotiator. We would need someone actively working on our behalf, acquiring the land that's going to be needed. And you'll, you can see on your, on your diagram, there is, they've got it marked out to specific spots that they would need easement rights in that. So there, we are waiting on a direction from Tech Three. They are going to forward, there is a legalized standard, how we proceed to put out this notice to the public.
Do you have a timeline of when you're supposed to hear back from Tech Three or when do you expect?
Tomorrow. Once we receive that, they will go to the newspaper, it will go on our website and forward to the public.
What percentage of this is being had by the village? What percent, like say?
Well, but in phase one, phase one was seventy thousand dollars.
Phase one was the responsibility of the village.
We need to forward, seal that.
Yes, and just case in point, going back to trustee Gonzalez's suggestions and what we've mentioned before with Darryl and our payouts and our programs and things like that, you know, we're learning as we go. The goal would be to withhold five percent, ten percent, whatever it is, often with final, no matter what the contract is until it's actually done. Because here's a problem, you have an engineering project, they submit invoices periodically based on the progress that they're, based on the invoices that they're submitting. And those get paid out because we have a responsibility to pay those out. But, you know, going with what you had indicated before about some other issues, it is a good practice, probably best practice, to determine when we're sentencing these other policies up to also identify that we're going to withhold five percent or ten percent of engineering projects or things of that sort until such time as the project's completed, not just as they've incurred it. Problem is with Tech Three, we've already paid them all seventy thousand dollars and it's not done. That creates a little bit of a quondary force.
So I remember, maybe you, Mayor, can remember when we approved it. It was over a year ago.
To, to January.
So what's their reasons for, they're just getting it around in this now? Do they give a reason? Do we know?
All right, let me say this. Let me just say this. I'm not happy. You're not happy. Nobody's happy. I'm not going to be like certain people. I'm going to blame the previous administration or previous engineers or previous whatever else unnecessarily. And tonight, the reality is we've got a problem. We're doing a full court press, trying to remediate that problem. It doesn't matter at the time. You know, we're taking what we've got and moving forward. So we've also reached out to another engineering firm to.
We want this other engineering firm to look at what was given to us today. We got a three-inch book on just the drainage study alone and then soil samples and maps. There's fifty-six pages. there's 56 pages or so of mapping, and so, not 70, yeah. So we're going to need some help looking at what we've got, to help digest this and make the appropriate steps. We're meeting Friday with another engineering company, and to sit with them.
On something this magnitude, you know, it's kind of like auditing Phase One at this point.
There is a little good news in this, if I can shed it.
Really?
When this is, once we jump this hurdle with this water issue, we can move forward into, in our public hearing, we can move to Phase Two. Much of Phase Two is completed at this time. So the geometry map, there's many, there's a lot of groundwork that's been laid, a few more things that we would have to do, such as a land acquisition, but we're purged, ready to move into Phase Two quickly. There is a September deadline, I believe IDOT placed on this. In talking to Tech Three today, it probably would be unrealistic to think we can get to that September deadline, but I think it's possible.
September deadline, or what?
For completion period?
No, to get to the, to get to the letting part, to where Phase Three, which would be a different structure.
So in all practicality, it will not be done until next year. And here's, and here's a problem additionally, a point of frustration we all know this, the problem is, is one has been delayed and deferred and forgotten. Now the problem we're going to run into is frankly, of course, you're going to have to maintain it to some extent through another season, another winter even, and there's going to be costs to that, so...
And then secondly, to the cost of that, because the, the materials of the project that's already been letting, this is the, like, the engineering costs that we have, but what about construction costs? Is that going to increase to our...
That, that, that part is already established, it was 80/20 of a rule on that.
80/20 was next payout.
So there's an 80/20 thing right on the part of participating on the 80%, we're paying the 20%. And, but the construction costs themselves, because it's delayed, unless employment and material rates go up, that's not going to change. But the problem is, is in the interim, we have to maintain the road, or, or alternatively, is we simply market local traffic only.
Well, I remember that the construction of a certain sidewalk that was delayed for four years, and the cost had increased 33% by the time it was begun.
Trustee Gonzalez, you led it right into what I was going to talk about, if I may. When sidewalk was mentioned, I made a statement that golf vista, the safe school sidewalk would be done in the next year, year and a half. Then I had to go back and show them a list of all the different committees that meet for one of these projects. There's at least 30, if not more. I had a sheet that long with all the different things that have to happen. You can't get here until you're finished here. The project got delayed and delayed and delayed, and two years later, it still wasn't done, three years from the time I said it would have been done, it turned out to be four. The wetlands entered into it, who knows what. When Route 50 happened now, okay? When Route 50 happened, you've got to understand, that ground has been dug up for a hundred years. They ran into things there that just, nobody knew. And I have to say this, and I will say it. Mr. Wallace was involved in Route 50 very heavily, and he did save the village a few hundred thousand dollars on different things that he had to do while they were digging something. We went ahead and rushed to put some piping in, to change some water lines and what have you, had a big argument over the main drain going across Route 50. When they wanted to get rid of the hill, now our main water line is too high. Well, we said, hey, it's not too high, it's down four and a half foot. Well, when we're done cutting the road down, it's only going to be two foot, and it's going to break. And the argument was that we were responsible. I do not, I don't know what happened on that. I just know that the total project was just one problem after another due to the fact that the ground had never been touched for all those years. There were even cables in there that they didn't know existed. If you, and then we had some poor workmanship, because it was a, and the police, I know I'm on filming and what have you, but contractors were specified by IDOT that would do work, that's why that retaining wall by Mulligan's was torn down. Because you could have went over there and beat a hole in it with a hammer, because it wasn't vibrated or anything, the wall was inferior, it was going to fall over anyway. So it was just, and this does not surprise me, this is the beginning. I don't, and from day one, because I was on road and bridge at the time on that committee, the project is to be completed in 2015. Believe it or not, we're not behind yet. But there's a lot of problems, and there's going to be more surprises. I'll just leave it that way, if I may say, okay? And I'm just giving you a little earmark on what goes on. We're going to be digging again and finding out things we don't even know yet. David is still looking for some kind of a thing to show him where, that Mr. Grisell, I should say, the head of our, our superintendent for the water department, you know, there's valves that haven't been touched in years, and if they touch them, we'll be digging holes and fixing those, or if you try to turn the line off. We got some problems, and there's going to be problems with this project too.
I'm not sure, was there any more question, 13, the Egyptian Trail project?
Number eight and number nine. Anyhow, let me just address this here, what these are. I'm sorry, you're level nine and 10, but you're actually eight and nine, that's fine. I think with the item, they have moved out for the, for some of those as well, so that's fine. So in your packet, the material are nine and 10, but it's on here with eight and nine, that's fine. Well, this is, is, it allows us the ability, and this is something that we found out when we went down for the Springfield visit, and I was interacting with a lot of its workers at the Will County Government League. They're trying to pass legislation down there pertaining to certain capabilities of municipalities to have the ability to inspect the records provided to the Department of Revenue. And what I discovered in being down there and dealing with all these other things, trying to push for certain things on behalf of their municipality, was there was already a provision because of the old rule, to allow us to do these things, and it was merely a matter of filling out the paperwork and sending it in. It's never been done, but we need it. It allows us, in some cases, to identify are people charging the proper sales tax when they're, when they're selling items, are they charging the Will County tax, or are they charging the Moonee tax, or they're charging whatever, and that allows us to inspect their, their records that have been submitted for the businesses. There's also, so that's the sales tax information form, and there are some situations where, from what I've come to my understanding, but I can't confirm it without looking at this, that we have had businesses that are not charging the proper sales tax, that ultimately affects our village's bottom line. Taxes are there for a reason, and everybody that should be taxed needs, anyhow. So that's important for us. The other item, number 10, I'll just go ahead to that and go back for motion and discussion. Item number, I'm sorry, the municipal telecommunications tax information has to do with, like, when there's a franchise agreement, Comcast, we've talked about the Comcast agreement in here, and was it about two years ago, a little, two, three years ago?
Yeah.
Yeah, roughly two and a half.
Yeah, up to two and a half.
There are other utilities, if you will, that would have franchise agreements, AT&amp;T is an example. They're, they're not a local franchise agreement, they're a state-managed franchise agreement. This would allow us to then be able to confirm whether, you know, the areas that are being identified are applied to our tax base or not. This is just a matter of allowing us to go in and identify are the proper taxes being applied, received, and then turn around and making sure they're being, you know, used appropriately. So these forms are formality that have to do with giving me the authorization to submit the paperwork to the Department of Revenue. One of the things that you need to be aware of is that the information gathered here, you can read a couple stipulations in these, that this information is highly confidential. The last thing we want to do is share any of this information with the general public that could be potentially a competitor to any of our local businesses, especially, and that's always a concern. If there were ever to be a violation of that confidentiality, we would lose our ability going forward to ever even have access to review the records. So to the best of my understanding, the way this would need to work, Finance Director would be probably one of the people that you're responsible for gathering this information from the state as a designated individual. The Finance Director would then have to secure this information in a locked file cabinet, or disposed of, or whatever the case may be, just to make sure that we protect the integrity of that expectation for confidentiality with this data. Because it could be construed as reveal of trade secrets or trade information of sorts, and that's reasonable limitations. That's why it has to go before the board especially. I can't decide and say, okay, I got to present it to the board, make sure you guys are fully aware of, of the criteria on that, and make sure you're okay with proceeding under those conditions.
Just a question. In the words reciprocal, you're in both of those, what is the reciprocal? What are the, do they mean for us?
You're the turn.
I just blame this initial agreement, they understand that we're going to ask for this information, but we also agree with them, as Matt indicated, that if it is released unauthorized to a competitor or to the public, they can stop, they can terminate sending us the agreements. It's very common. The bigger users, not that they're around right now, but if the bigger users come on, this is precious to them because it's proprietary. They don't want their competitors to know one bit how much is being submitted. So I think what they're indicating, Trustee Gonzalez, if we do disclose it negligently or on purpose, they have the right to stop the information.
The word reciprocal there is not that we have to give them something for us to receive the information?
Well, I believe, I believe you would indicate their ability to inspect the processes.
And disagree. Exactly.
I think the other key to that, because the Trustee Horn and I and Clark Asia were involved with this, and particularly from the start of the mayor's report, is if we read in both these agreements, it says the information is released to the employees that are designated by the village. As a cautionary thing, I wouldn't want to see this released to politicians who have been elected, but to employees who are charged with that responsibility. That keeps us clean. But the intent here is, we're now in a position where we could audit or check revenues that are very important to us, particularly as they get tighter and tighter over the next few years, as the state continues to tighten what they're going to give to us, we need to make sure we're getting our fair share. And without this ability, we don't have the opportunity to go in and check a particular business. There are cases, and we had this discussion that night, where municipalities were, or businesses within a municipality were actually putting the wrong information down, and other municipalities were getting that revenue rather than the municipality presenting, in the case of Moonee, that would be very important. I could take a specific example out here of the federal stop where University Park gets the revenue off of one tank, and by the way, I want to thank ex-Trustee Pearson for this information, and three other tanks are supposed to be getting revenue from the village of Moonee. We know that, but we don't know that's the way it's working. Without the ability to go in and check that, we can't verify that we're getting the correct revenue. I think that in particular is a good example of where we might get additional revenue just by auditing and verifying that we're getting, if they're, if they're, for example, doing a 50/50 split, the three fourths of the revenue is coming off of Moonee's site, we should be getting three fourths of the revenue.
And we do have other businesses that, the contingency of some other agreement, without them getting a sales tax remit, let's say, would be that they're going to charge Moonee sales tax out of the transactions at that facility. Doesn't mean that they always do, this is a way for us to confirm them.
And I totally, I just wanted to know what the word reciprocal meant, whether they need from us, because that means...
I understand. I, I wondered the same thing, but...
And then secondly, my only other question is, the policing of this is going to fall on our Finance Director?
Well, he's the one that deals with finances and acquired industry.
Or Treasurer, is it?
Well...
Just add it to your plate, yeah? You've now got a okay. All right. If I'm right, then, because it will be staff on any of those.
Right, right. Yeah, I don't see a reason why there'd be a problem with the Finance Director and Treasurer and perhaps even the Assistant Administrator or something like that for redundancy, in the event that for some reason, if Darryl's out and we need to get him some updated information for some reason, there needs to be, you know, alternative.
Unless he's taking a sabbatical in Alaska or something, it can wait, hey?
Okay, but, all right, so, all right, so I'm looking for a motion to grant me, grant me the ability to fill out this paperwork as requested for item eight, I eight, which has to do with approval of Department of Revenue's sales tax agreement. I'll entertain a motion to approve the, and it's a, the three orders also just a...
Just a motion.
But are they going to want?
I don't believe so. They, they don't think so, yeah.
For our records, should we keep it as an order? I just wondered because for agreements, sometimes we, a little bit, we know it's in our agreement.
For the order, it's fine, we can just, we can just, we can just...
A resolution, you mean, or what? I don't care, I just think we need to have a document number.
Oh, yeah, without a document. Then, in that case, if we're not wishing on the authorization to execute it.
That up to the agenda for the next week?
No, you can do it now. So it's under the agenda for the mayor to approve the sales tax agreement, or just a resolution?
Prohibition authorizing the...
You're to execute on behalf of the Department of Revenue.
Okay, so that would, that would be for the sales tax agreement. That, sorry, we get a motion on that? Gray and Razik.
And I would like to point out before roll call, the reason those documents are marked nine and 10 rather than eight and nine, they're originally 10 items under your agenda, I'm going to have to get the clerk's report and the estimate and so on.
So we need a resolution then, right?
Yeah, we need a resolution number, that's right.
2014 dash four.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Trustee Bob?
Yes.
Graysick?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Okay. Hey, we're good, are good.
Thank you, Mayor. with Greylar, the board recalls Greylar, sent a letter to us requesting some TIP interest on the payment, exclude them, took some good negotiations, and Greylar has approved a tentative settlement, which is spelled out for the village board. The water line's going to be installed at Greylar, which is, I forgot where it's located, but, by industrial drive, way out yonder. It costs $100,000. They're going to pay $24,000, which is very acceptable. The payment structure is set forth in two, no payments due in 2014, a payment of $6,000 for 2015, $6,000 in 2016. Those monies will be coming out of their TIP payment. If the board recalls their payment, that we pay them is roughly $20,000. If the board recalls their payment, that we pay them roughly $20,000 per year. So what will happen, obviously, they'll be deducted. So you're guaranteed, rather than paying 20, you'll be paying roughly $14,000. The remaining $12,000 will be deducted from the interest portion note, if there's money available at that point in time. The village indicated to them, "We'll use our best efforts," which is not a guarantee, "we'll use our best efforts to complete the water line project by the end of this year." In addition to that, they also agreed to be responsible for the customary costs of the waterline installation, including capon fees, meters, permits, and inspection cost. These costs will be deducted from the interest portion of the payment, once again, you and Owen Gralor, in accordance with the terms of the developers' note, which was executed 2005 through 2006. They've already approved this, signed by Mr. Larson, which is one of the principles. This will end any type of, let's say, ongoing tension between the parties. The board thinks appropriate, we need a motion authorizing the approval of this agreement with Gralor, LLC.
And we have done a phone poll to get a consensus on this, but this is where we reaffirm it?
Yes, sir.
I'll make that motion.
Gonzalez and Pop?
Question, sir. Do we have any recourse if they de-dollar?
If they default?
If they default.
Default in what way?
If I did.
Well, I'm asking...
In the respect, sir, that if they don't pay their taxes, we're not out any money. We're guaranteed we'll make that money for the first two years, because we paid them $20,000. Now we reduce that to 14. So in essence, there's nothing in our pocket. If the default, they have more time than we do, because they don't get paid off the real estate taxes. And we owe them till, I think, 2021. Initially, the developers' note was $200,000. They probably won't see that.
Do they own this property?
Yes, sir. They bought it in 2005. And their cost to purchase that property and construct it, I think exceeded $700,000.
Okay. We have a motion, and a second motion, sir. Would this be a resolution or not?
Just a motion, yeah. Just, I need approval.
Okay, that's fine.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Razik?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item, in connection with this project, authorization to prepare the bids for the industrial drive water main extension, will be using TIP funds that are available in the TIP district, but we need authorization to prepare the bids and specs to go off a bid for this project. And as, as we indicated in our agreement with Mr. Larson and Graham, we'll use our best efforts to complete this by end of this year. So this is our act of good faith.
So, I'll undertake a motion to approve the preparation of the bidding paperwork.
To move forward.
To move forward. Yep. Thank you. What did he say?
I made the motion when he said.
Certainly when he said.
Yeah, good. Yeah, Gray and Razik, yeah, sorry. Next time. Roll call, please.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Razik?
Yes.
Gonzalez? And I'll say yes, but I just wanted to ask, and Mr. Grisell, you're gonna be the one preparing the paperwork to go out to bid?
Actually, the, usually the paperwork is prepared by the engineer, because they'll have all the specs on there.
Okay, thank you. And yes.
Okay. Well, that's a W's.
Yes, I understand.
Sorry, Mayor.
Thank you. As we get into the official's report, I do want to bring up a positive note. We got two of our members of our police commission here tonight. I was talking to Mr. Gresbek, who's one of our, actually the chair of the police commission. Mr. Gresbek, would you mind coming forward and just giving us an update on where we're at on the, I want to acknowledge Commissioner Pearson's here as well tonight, so...
It's been primarily a test, just getting organized. About our last meeting, the last meeting, we did approve the rules and regulations of the commission, which is a big, which is a big project. That's, that's where I really hit. We've got a rule and regulations.
We have, we have approved a testing company who will help us with providing tests for candidates to be police officers.
And I might add, that we had the demand to have a police commission for almost three years. I hadn't met, but, once we got the appointments to the current commission, I'm impressed in a matter of five months, six months?
Well, we realize the importance of it, because until, until our commission is active and, and, active, RT fully, we, we, we give any police department, any, any police officers.
Right.
So that, been our stress is to get that done, and I do already do that.
Thank you, sir.
To you.
Appreciate your hard work, both of you, and Mickey for what she said. All right, next on the agenda here, we have K1. Trustee Pop?
I have no report right now.
All right. Well, I believe, if I help you out on this, because I know we've talked about this, and I know you've talked to Mr. Batista on this as well.
We're ever close.
I know, I know, I know. And we're frankly, we're upside down, underwater. And it's not a, can you hear through him? Yeah, we're upside down underwater, we have to resolve this.
Sorry. He's not having any major names. Thank you, who's bothering me too.
Anyhow, we need to get this resolved. You know, ideally, we would get this resolved in such a way that the synchronization of when the trash rate, as the market indicated, is going up, is it June or July 1st?
July 1st.
July 1st is also consistent with our, whatever the water rate increases, because I don't want to inundate our front office two pay periods in a row, or billing periods in a row, where we're calling, people are calling complaining, saying, "What's up? Why'd my thing go up?" All this kind of stuff. It'd be nice to be able to deal with it all at one time. Mr. Batista suggested, as much as it's an uncomfortable thing to do, it's part of what we need to do, and that's a point of open forum discussion, making sure the general public is aware of why we need to do what we need to do. This is not a decision that any one person is looking to do, but it is something that we, in order to be responsible, overall, based on the usage, people that use something need to pay the cost of that service. We're in the process of identifying the correct, I mean, the current rates for a number of other surrounding areas, Will, Kankakee, Cook, county areas, just being similar, have different water sources and things like that. There's stormwater management fees that might be a consideration, because we have some areas that we need to consider some of that. And this is not trying to gouge or profit off of the residents or the businesses, but it's merely keeping the village from taking a loss perpetually. DJ, what is the current, what are we losing, basically? Trustee Pop, do you have the...
Thirty thousand, approximately. Every building cycle. For two or three years.
Yeah.
Due to a couple of ordinances that were...
Yeah, two or three years, when it's been a long time. That just wasn't caught. And we're not looking to recoup that immediately.
Well, the, the point is, is to be forewarned, in some cases, and this is important, to have an actual public hearing so people are aware of this, because we don't want to surprise people, we don't want people to say, "Oh, my gosh, you know, what happened to my water bill, what happened to my trash bill," or whatever else, like that. If we're gonna be open, we're gonna be transparent, we're gonna communicate, we have to do this as well. So, once we're prepared for that, and we anticipate it probably during the next board meeting, but I don't know that we'll have everything we need in that timeframe, chances are we'll call a special public hearing just for the purpose of that, so it can be all, the hostility can be in one night, not... But, it's something we need to do. So, that being said, I do appreciate the fact that Trustee Pop was quick to pick up on this and has been tending to this. Nobody wants their name associated with a rate increase or whatever else, but nobody wants to be responsible for throwing money away.
Mayor, may I say, in regard to what you said, I didn't have a problem with it, because we haven't had a rate increase in 14 years. But, some things came up unexpected that really put a monkey wrench in it. It's almost like an ITAP project, if I can say it that way. It will be resolved, and, again, as, as the mayor said, we're not out to gouge anyone. If the mistake was made, it was made, we're going to rectify it, but not all of it immediately, obviously.
Right. So, so as we have the information available, anticipate a special meeting at some point as a public hearing, just before we're... Trustee Horn?
No report this time.
Okay. Trustee Razik?
Okay.
Can I believe on both of those, the chief is working?
Yes, sir.
I know he's working, I just finished his sentence.
I've been nitty in the ordinances for a while. I had the longest meeting I've ever had with Attorney Kraszewski in my life, working village, and I admit it.
Sure. Okay, thank you so much. It's funny when a cop complains about dealing with an attorney. Yeah. Number four, and I believe, Trustee Holston, you were going to help with this, I'm not sure if you're necessarily...
I'm waiting on the Assistant Minister to ready to give us some information.
Perfect, perfect. Okay. Anybody else have anything on officials for reports or anything of that sort?
I'll just report that I also attended the Will County Government League last week. Several good meetings and discussions, several good meetings and discussions with numerous officials. We did meet with our representative for our area, that is Jones, he was very considerate, gave us a lot of good time. He has committed, and I believe Clark Cazier alluded to this, to try and meet in the Moni area with us in this next 30 days. So we're working with him, and I think the change group has indicated that we'll approach it. Senator Harris was not in his office, but his secretary did say that he would, when we contest his district office, he would make her be tempted to be there as well. So hopefully, we can coordinate the meeting between the two, that would give us something to talk about in this area, about what issues we have in this area. There were also numerous discussions with numerous senators and representatives regarding the Eliana and the suburban airport issues that are going on right now, and the need for villages like Moni to be able to take advantage, if it's appropriate, of any economic development potential that might be. And I think there was, that kind of discussion is an ongoing dialogue to get established. So I think we were well represented, Trustee Horn, and yourself, of course, and Clark Cazier, and I, I took the paper.
Okay. Anybody else?
And I'll, again, since my name wasn't on there, but I will just bring up very quickly and shortly, I'm gonna bring it up under Old Business, and again, I'm gonna talk about the webpage. It's still not up and running, and we're six months now into it, and it is still not up and running. So I apologize to everybody for that, and I hope, again, I will pre this, you know, the right, you know, broken record on this one, until it is up and running, please bear with us, but it is something, it's a thorn in my side, and I want it up as badly as you do, trust me on that. And I will bring up again about the bill payment issue, about making sure that we have our project done before bills go out. And secondly, I wanted to bring up about a new Facebook page, a new Facebook page for the village officially, I saw was begun on 3/31, on March 31st. So this is somewhere, again, using communication and a social media tool to our advantage, that we can send out new ordinances, or when water bills are due, or should we have a kids' day in the park, or the Easter bunny, that somebody in the office can easily send out that. So if you are on Facebook, become, become, like us, so you get all those updates as well, okay? And there are two of them out there, so if you need a link to the new one, just leave me after the meeting, I'll make sure you get invited. Please like us, yes.
Yeah, please like us. All right. Yes, sir. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. I just want to remind folks that the tippecap is gonna be the 16th of this month, it'll be issued first grant from 11 to 7, so come on down, we're gonna have, obviously, good food being served by them, and it's gonna be served to you by us, and we'll also have t-shirts, hats, pins, raffle tickets, all kinds of things for sale there that day. I'd also like to mention that South Suburban, which became our first corporate contributor, and gave us a substantial donation, which is going into Special Olympics. You know, we'd like to thank them for that. Of course, anybody else that has a corporation that'd like to come up and talk to me about it, we'd be happy to talk to them, so we can buy corporate donation. We'd like to have more than one sponsor if that's possible. And, very briefly, the last thing is, we graduated our women's retirement self-defense class in 29 for this one, and Superintendent Grisell's wife was one of the people that we graduated, and of course, we weren't gonna do a demo here, because I didn't want to get my butt kicked by a girl. But I just wanted to say that it was a lot of fun doing it, and I'm real proud of all the people that participated in it, and I hope it'll be very good.
Thank you, sir.
So, what's the deed of tippecap?
The 16th is the tippecap, it's gonna be issued, 11 to 7.
After you've figured that out. One second.
That's one, that's one.
One second. I was totally leaving my phone off, I can't open my calendar. All right. And thank you very much for all the, all the place, and you pushing that all that.
Are we doing our thoughts on that?
Yeah, just a second. Torch rounds gonna be...
June 11.
Is that, we identified, are you going to allow members of the public to run with you at current time, or is it strictly for the law enforcement?
Generally speaking, it's members of the law enforcement that are actually doing the running.
Sure.
And then, our, we have another event coming up, it'll be on May 30th, and it'll be the cap on top, so you can stop by and look at the notice and get more money. You know, not that we want to lead everybody dry, but the more money we can give off to the special kids, you know, the easier it's gonna be, become successful in the future.
Thank you, sir. Trustee, Trustee, Secretary Grisell?
Since nobody has said it, and I don't see representatives here, I just wanted to thank the Creamery Foundation for their pancake breakfast, they did a good job with that. I attended with the family, they had a fun time, it was better, it was a good, good time for the kids, the, it was great, they had fruit for the kids, it was fun for everybody. I did meet with the Creamery Foundation, and it seems to be that they're on target to be able to put that building as a landmark status, which is very good for Moni, it will put them in an archived type of environment, to be able to have people, and towards attractions, and so on and so forth, get the name off their, get Moni in the haps as a, having a landmark structure in there, so that's good. Want to remind the residents, yard waste pickup started April 1st with our garbage company, they will now pick up your sticks, yard debris, stuff that came over through the wintertime, if you need to get that done, April 1st, they will pick up during garbage, your garbage days on Friday, have them in a craft bag, or in a 35-gallon or less garbage container with the appropriate sticker that you can get free at the village hall. And, let's see, we accomplished street sweeping, this spring already, we got all the stone that we shaved off, the streets are plowing all the time, and the curbs and the gutter lines, it freshened up the environment, took care of that, got that accomplished. And last but not least, I secured some larbicide from Will County Department of Public Health again this year, saved a new pallet, about $3,000 for our larbicide, so we've been out there with the Jeter truck since the snow's thawed, cleaning structures, storm basins, getting ready for the spring rains, making sure the water will flow, so that we can drop the larbicide down in the catch basins, all part of trying to reduce the nuisance mosquitoes. That's all I have. That's all I have. Very quickly, a couple announcements, April 12th, the local Methodist Church will have a cleanup day, we're going to have on 70 other folks, P. N. G. will be, they're at the Rock Creek, Overers Highway, and they will also, in Parkers Park, they need to get ready for Easter breakfast. It's from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM, April 12th, Saturday, this cleanup Saturday, then they will end up at their church.
Their church here?
They're going to start on Overers Highway, it'll be, the Overers Highway, about 50 working south, then there'll be a team set up to Parkers Park, so they need to clock. Anybody who wants to help out, follow the two, can catch the group at the park, and also on about 50. There also is another group that will be at their church, it's a team there as well. That's from 8:00 to 1:00 on Saturday, then April 19th, Saturday, following Saturday, is our Easter breakfast, and it's hosted by the village, and by the Bodie Alliance Churches. It is free, no cost to anyone that comes out, there'll be an Easter egg hunt as well, and it's from 9:00 AM to 11:30 AM. So 9:00 to 11:30, that's also at Parkers Park, the village, and they'll take a donation, but it is free, free of costs. And they will have categories of ages for their, for Easter egg hunt, they'll have it marked on, on the field, and we're also going to have Trustee Gray, I believe, to plug, so.
Yeah.
The Hoover. You?
A lot of Hoover's down.
So come out and support this, this is going to be awesome, I think, out here, 10,000 ages, I think we're going to be ready for it.
The kids. And.
And finally, I didn't mention, April 14th starts our fitness program, the next session, our fitness program, Monday through Saturday, and we're introducing Taekwondo in this, in this session, and that's for four and nine-year-olds, and we're getting ready to settle for that as well, and it's going to be a simulator and a lot of instruction for our younger folks, and that is all I have.
Ruben, quick question for you, tell about the Easter breakfast, who do you kind of?
There is actually a few folks, but I think, the folks who call here to the village, I guess for myself, but the contact is Mickey Hoover, who's overseeing the best.
If you want to help on the breakfast, I happen to know the church is doing that, so you can see me.
Thank you. Sir Ruben, one more thing, Kids Day, does that deepen, identify?
Yes, sorry about that. In July, July 7th through 11th, the churches are having a vacation Bible school, that'll run Monday through Friday, and then it'll back off on Saturday, July 12th, Kids Day, and it's tentatively scheduled from 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM. We're looking to do pretty much the same thing we did last year.
Okay, great.
That's going to be held at next door, next door at Parkers Park.
Thank you very much. Okay, anything else from any of the official? Okay. Let her in, hopefully the public. On the agenda items, please allow your comments for three minutes, come to the podium, your name and address.
First of all, I'd just like to smile. Director of the Department of Public Health, 27253, so Timberland, Moni, Illinois, I'd just like to remind everybody that WTA LTV has a Facebook page, also, we have things about Moni, and there are other, other events happening in the area. Tell them there's WTA LTV, if you seen on YouTube, you just put WTA L in, and you have to put the date in, the thing you want to see, because YouTube, that's kind of screwed, it's, to get to the particular thing, you have to put the date in. And the other thing I want to mention, if you like nice music, Channel 4 has got great music, Wendy, the silver star, there's no programming, but just bad noises about things in the area, great background music, thank you.
Thanks, George.
George Pearson, 5108 West Rogers Bridge Road. Couple questions. The, the two million dollar grant that's available, one, the project we realized this was not agenda, but there was with the storage tank issue coming out now, there was not, no real information about originally, that storage tank, would that end up coming out of TIP then, and would that end up affecting what is supposed to go across industrial drive? Is that part of the synergy?
It's early in the, in the design phase, we're still in phase one, and we've already discussed with engineering that that's not a viable option, so I don't see that storage tank happening, we're trying to explore other avenues and hope to have more information than I have in the quarter.
Now, one last thing. If in fact, we are considering Ruben Batista to move over into the village administrative position, that leaves one person that will be filling a void that this board, myself as a member of the head, approved, including building department as well, are we expecting or will we be stretching them to thin with a lot of this, in contract negotiations, personnel issues as a village administrator, going to different meetings that pertain to the village, as well as a lot of these kind of boards?
That's, that's a lot, so is this board going to end up hiring someone else to fill this EMA special events, why is there a little, what else?
Good question, and the reality is, anybody who's been around me very much at all knows I stretch everybody thin.
That's the truth.
Actually, what we're trying to do, what we've been doing, is we have been trying to not make a bottleneck of the position at the top of the pyramid, or whatever you want to describe, the organizational chart, or whatever else has been, the bottleneck of information shouldn't be. So what we've been doing is, you know, we've been trying to have more of, and again, if you're truly fostering the idea of developing people to be more effective in each position, you know, Darrell has been attending some finance director type meetings, Barb has actually been going out and dealing with things that are pertaining to insurance, things of that sort, where people have their specific skills and they have greater aptitude, we send those people, we don't need to have the administrator per se be the expert on everything, we need the administrator simply to be, at least for right now, we need the administrator, a person fulfilling that a little partially even, to be in a capacity to make sure the other things are being orchestrated, doesn't mean they have to be an expert in all those things. DJ's been involved, doing a lot more than he's done before, everybody stepping up and doing a bigger piece of the equation of things that need to be done. What it does is, it does create a little bit better fault tolerance within the system. If you have one person that's the only person that knows a lot of things, and you lose that one person, it hurts pretty bad. We need to recognize our potential growth, and that has to do, Public Works is an example, and we got a public works department that depends on the time of the year and everything else, 10 guys, something thereabouts, during the summer sometimes 14, 15 guys. If you compare that to, say, the police department, you have a hierarchy there, we have a chief, a couple sergeants, you got administrator, administrator staff, you know, but we have no support system for our superintendent of public works. And our town's not going to get any smaller, it's going to get bigger, the, the demand as we annex more properties and do things of that sort, and infrastructure development, things of that sort, you know, we need to make sure that, as an example, I use DJ as an example, we need to be grooming DJ to have support staff, not just his workforce, but to actually have an effective support staff and assistant superintendent at some point. Is that going to be immediately or right away? No, not necessarily, unless it can be a hybrid role with other things. The reality is, is you try to develop and groom people from within to be more what they have the potential to be. So to answer your question, everybody's being stretched to do more and to be more, and the village is benefiting from this process, and the individual employees are benefiting from this process, because frankly, we have to consider that even if the employee is improving their skill set, should we be bothered by the fact that ultimately, if they improve their skill set and they're interacting, you know, I don't want to lose Darrell, but if Darrell's going off and he's meeting with other finance directors and all that, next thing you know, he's potentially more valuable, and he gets a job somewhere else, well, we just need to make sure that he enjoys his job enough, that he's going to, you know, he's going to say, "Hey, this is great, I, I like this, they let me out of my cage occasionally, and I get stuff done, and I learn what other towns are doing", and things like that. So we're not trying to narrow it all into one position, we're dividing it and properly delegating, frankly. So, it's good structure, it's not a wheelchair sound, you know, it's.
Nobody's broke it.
So, I don't know, did that answer your question, George?
No, but.
Okay. Are you surprised?
No.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Pearson, for your comments, I can assure you that the trustee who replaced you has the same interest, and it's important that we manage the village properly, it's important that we manage our money properly, it's important that we make sure a part-time mayor's not going in the office of the administration, and what we need to do is make sure that we set something up to, to accomplish all of those objectives. So thank you for having the confidence in the trustees and the administration to be able to do that.
Okay, anybody else?
Senator, 25654, fire cell, a question for Attorney Grzeski. The, I have a policy here to be developing, I hope that will include issuing of a purchase order system. I can't imagine that purchase orders have not been used for control and expenditures for years.
Sure.
At the time of the call, I've seen, like, multiple hundred dollar villages at work, and there's got to be something added to, an objective balance system, I guess that's the best way of looking at it, but I'll have to the board to view.
Okay. Anybody else? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to go to executive session pertaining to the issues of, you know, litigation. Raisik, Gonzalez, roll call, please.
Justine Holston. Yes. Horn. Yes. Raisik. Yes. Gonzalez. Yes.
Coming out of executive session, roll call, please.
Gonzalez. Here. Gray. Yes. Holston. President, Horn. Here.
Okay, going back to item I-6, I'll entertain a motion to approve adding the designation, the additional responsibility designation to our EMA director as being the interim administrator, I think is that correct?
Second.
So that was Holston and Pop. Roll call, please.
Gray. Yes. Holston. Yes. Horn. Yes. Raisik. Yes. Gonzalez. Yes.
Thank you. Undertaining a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call.
Holston. Yes. Horn. Yes. Raisik. Yes. Gonzalez. Yes. Gray.